Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners Special Called Meeting this afternoon. Before we get started, at this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Couch if he would lead us in an invocation.
I'd be glad to.
Let's just seek the peace. Let our minds rest. Gracious Creator, we're thankful to be gathered here today as professionals, as friends, as people who are commanded to do unto others as we would have done unto ourselves. We ask your guidance, your inspiration. We ask your blessing, and we thank you, Heavenly Father, for the gifts and the many talents that are in this room to do as you would do to your people. These things we say, amen to. Amen.
Amen. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This afternoon, the Board wears blue ribbons with cameo overlay at the request of Commissioner Tobin. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, guys.
We are here to honor the eight victims of a plane crash that was very, very close to home. On February the 13th, a private-owned, single-engine plane crashed off the coast near Drum Inlet. It was eighteen miles from the small coastal airport in Beaufort. Just learned just yesterday that the remains were covered of all eight in the fuselage. And those who were on board, if you'll keep them in your thoughts and prayers, was Ernest Rawls, the pilot, age sixty-seven, from Greenville, North Carolina; Jeffrey Rawls, twenty-eight, of Greenville, North Carolina; Stephanie Fulter, forty-two, from Sea Level, North Carolina; Jonathan McInnis, age fifteen, from Sea Level, North Carolina; Douglas Parker, age forty-five, from Sea Level, North Carolina; Noah Styron, fifteen, from Cedar Island, North Carolina; Michael Shepard, age fifteen, from Atlantic, North Carolina; and Jacob Taylor, age sixteen, from Atlantic, North Carolina. The four teenagers were students at East Carteret High School. The group was returning from a hunting trip and were traveling from Inglehart to Hyde County to Beaufort. Please keep their families in your thoughts and prayers. County Manager.
Good evening. You all have seen, I think, the various proposals that are before us, the RFQs. The Capital Improvement Committee has met twice concerning this. They met once and reviewed the initial proposal that came in. They didn't reach any conclusions from that meeting. We asked the applicants to come in at a meeting and make a presentation. They made a presentation last week, and the Board felt like that they had two really good proposals and were having a difficult time making a recommendation and wanted to come to you all as a full Board to have a discussion, to help them make some decisions on how we go forward. The good news is we've got two excellent companies doing something that is going to be beneficial to Dare County or wanting to. The bad news is we've got two excellent companies that want to do something for Dare County, and it's going to be difficult to make a decision. So you're just going to have to go through and hear what the other Commissioners and members of the CIP have to say, and then we'll make some decisions. Today, you have multiple choices. You can approve or select one of them today. The notice was broad enough that allows you to act today. This is a regular meeting of the -- is a meeting of the Board that's been noticed, and so you have the authority to act if you want to. You can choose not to act today. We have put it on the agenda for your regular meeting on Tuesday. In case you don't act today, then you would have the ability to act on Tuesday, and you certainly always have the ability to call the two applicants in and let them present to the full Board. We have not allowed--
Bobby, let me interrupt just a minute. Commissioner House, I want to make sure you can hear everything.
Oh, yeah, I can hear it. I hear it fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I failed at the beginning of the meeting to make notice that Commissioner House was attending virtually, and Commissioner Bateman's not able to be with us. He has a personal issue he's taking care of. Sorry for interruption.
It's fine. So you always have the choice to allow them to come back and make a presentation. We've advised that we wouldn't allow them to speak today because it wouldn't be fair for letting one or the other make an additional presentation to you without offering that to each of them. If you have questions of either group that we can't answer, then we can always submit the questions to both groups, let them respond to your questions, and then when we come back, if we don't decide today, we can come back on Tuesday and decide if those questions are significant enough that you need answers before you make your decisions. And so that's sort of the layout of why we're here, what we're here. How much deeper do you want me to go, Bob?
That's sufficient. I have asked Commissioner Ross to, if he wouldn't mind, summarize in our two CIP -- not two meetings, CIP meetings, but the CIP meeting we had with the two folks, and I've asked him to do a little summary to help Commissioner Tobin and Commissioner Couch and House understand what was brought to us at that meeting. Well, Jim was there.
I was at both meetings.
Jim was there. That's right. So Commissioner Ross, do you mind?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In terms of a brief preamble summary, we started this many months ago when we determined that literally one of the number-one, if not the number-one issue for Dare County was essential housing. We have people in every level of employment, private and public, throughout the county, really, really desperately looking for solutions to housing. So we said, yes, we're going to take this up, and by golly, we're going to do something about it. We enlisted the help of Development Finance Initiative, a nonpartisan group tied into the UNC Chapel Hill University of North Carolina, and retained them as a consultant to help guide us through the myriad of regulations and rules regarding developing essential housing with government funding. What we found was it was quite complex, and some of the rules were very, very restrictive, as in you must have a partner who is qualified in a public-private partnership to develop these, and we sought only those that would be qualified. They had to be experienced in developing multi-unit housing. Before us came two qualified companies, one of which was Coastal Affordable Housing. I see a number of the representatives of that group here today. And they are a recently formed company, a limited liability company, and they are made up of construction, real estate development, architecture, law, finance, some consulting, some actual principles, and provided us with a very, very good presentation where they were able to explain their credentials, explain their vision for developing the housing that we so desperately need, laid out potential sites after scouring through the county, and we came away very, very impressed. It was a really good job. Then we had another group that came in, and it was called Woda Cooper. Woda Cooper is out of Columbus, Ohio, and have, hmm, activity that they've built over the last twenty-five or thirty years related to specifically essential housing, dealing with the myriad of government agencies and/or regulations regarding what we've abbreviated as LIHTC Funding, which is an acronym for Low-Income Housing Tax Credit, L-I-H-T-C. And it carries its own set of rules with different levels of tax credits that, in a project such as this, can be bundled and sold to a third party, yielding incremental funds to us, which are effectively coming from the federal government through the LIHTC vehicle that allows us to build more units with less county or local money and less borrowing by a developer partner, be that Coastal or Woda Cooper. So as we went through it, we would question and answer each one of the groups about alternative financing, what would be the best way to pursue it. Each of them presented financial modeling that they had done. And if I can go back to Woda Cooper for a minute, they, again, have operated in sixteen states throughout the East, Southeast, and are currently -- they have developed and are managing over sixteen thousand of these units, where if you think about how it would work, you have to start with the idea to do it, you then acquire a site at some price. That site then needs to be developed. You put in infrastructure, utilities, and roads, and street lamps, and curbs, and whatnot. Then from that point, you vertical build, where you construct the actual units themselves. And once they're completed, you have to have an entity that will remain on-site long-term to ensure that they're managed and provided proper oversight and supervision, that maintenance is prepared, taxes are paid, compliance with all of these government regulations I referred to. And County Manager was just briefing us correctly that we actually have three separate levels of regulations we're trying to dovetail into this proposal, a constitutional requirement in the state of North Carolina about how public money can be used. The recent legislative language that was just contained in the budget passed, was it November? I think it was November, October, November, just a few months ago. And then, thirdly, the LIHTC or Low-Income Tax Credit language and restrictions tied to the federal government. I have omitted the fourth, which would have been American Rescue Plan Funds. I'm looking at Dave Clawson because I think we got clearance that it was usable. He's shaking his head. No, I may be making a mistake. Jump in, Dave.
Not for the state funds.
Wrong pot of money.
I couldn't hear you, Dave.
Not for the state funds. Our funds were clear.
The seven million dollars in our initial ARP that we have that we were going to use for Bowser Town are clear.
Thank you.
The thirty-five million dollars is still incurred by the Fed.
Understood, understood. So if that little explanation is a little confusing or sounds confusing, that's because it is, okay?
Right.
And I was just telling these guys, I'm -- I used to do a lot of this for many, many years during my career. I dealt in financial modeling, budgeting, strategies, analysis, mergers, acquisitions, and I'm reasonably experienced at it, and I was wrestling with it. So I thought, geez, the rest of the Board members must also be wrestling with it because it's not simple. It's not clear. So as we went through as a small subgroup, the Capital Investment Planning Group, the CIP Group, it became more obvious to us that, A, this is a big-scope project. It's not going to be one thirty-five-acre, forty-acre, five-hundred-and-fifty-unit development for a hundred million dollars. We don't have -- that's physically not going to happen. What we're going to experience, I hope sooner than later, is a series of projects, maybe sixty, eighty units, maybe a hundred and twenty units, all depending on the physical nature of the sites we select. So there will be nuance and complexity with each one, architectural, wastewater, drainage, wetlands, et cetera. So there's nothing easy here. I really wish we had, like, again, forty acres of prairie right next door to a wastewater treatment plant, and we could go and boom, we'd have five hundred units, a whole community, and we could launch this thing. But it's not, and it's more difficult. So as I said, we saw from our two presenters, the Coastal Group, newly-formed, newly-assembled, but with very impressive folks, very high-qualified folks with a lot of experience in architecture, development, building multi-unit housing, but they've never actually done it, okay? There's every likelihood they could. Yes, sir.
Actually, I'm going to correct you on that.
Okay.
Because Freddie Mills has done it, and he manages over twenty thousand units.
No, he does. You're correct, Jim. And he's a consultant to the group, which is very effective, but he's not a principal in the group, which is what I was looking for, that principal participation of Mr. Mills. And Commissioner Tobin correctly points out Fred Mills Construction has done many thousands of units under management through, I think, United Management, is it? The reason I'm looking is because that company is a vertically-integrated, have built for many years essential housing units, houses, retain that development control and ownership, and continue to manage and monitor rent compliance, maintenance, et cetera. So, yes, Mr. Mills definitely was capable and so forth, but he is a consultant to the group. The group had its principals listed in there, and, again, very good guys, no question at all, very reputable, reputable guys. Woda Cooper also came, and they are, as I said, about twenty-five years' worth of vertical integration, working with the federal and state government, and have many projects here in the state of North Carolina that they have both designed with their in-house -- or with their architectural partner, they have constructed, and they are currently managing and have managed some of them, as I said, for twenty-five years. So it conveyed to me two groups that appeared very good, and I was not comfortable, and I suggested to the Chairman that we should share the presentations and this background with the other members of the Board to get input and/or feedback on a decision such as this, and then in this meeting also be able to raise any other questions that may have arisen during the ensuing days since those meetings, because I had a few. I had jotted down some notes and had a few questions, and therefore, I thought it would be worthwhile to provide that briefing, an opportunity to go through the written materials, and then follow up, not in this meeting, but follow up to each developer with any questions we might have about their organization, their commitment, their availability, financial strength, et cetera. Does that help summarize?
Absolutely. Did, and very good summary. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. So that's where we are.
Okay. I will yield to my fellow Commissioners if they have any questions at this point in time after Commissioner Ross's comments. Jim, do you have any?
No, I wasn't able to ask questions--
Right.
-- at the CIP meetings, but I feel like all the questions that kind of popped into my mind were asked by you guys.
Gotcha.
So I feel pretty comfortable with what was presented, but I feel like Danny and Urban and Steve probably really--
Right.
Yeah, I agree. I know you were able to attend, Jim, but yes.
It was confusing, but--
And if I may, the confusion comes into the part where it's kind of where the sausage is made, if I can borrow that little metaphor, because each one of these will have restrictions on how many units must be, and for those listening, offered for rent at a very fixed rental amount. Now, the challenge in essential housing is you could have a certain number of units that are mandatory by the use of the public funds to be rented at, I think the number was around seven hundred and thirteen dollars a month on a one-bedroom. See, what we're battling here, folks, is anyone that's paying attention is aware that land, metals, building materials, construction, labor, these costs, we're experiencing some of the highest inflation in forty years, and those costs are extremely high. If you marry that cost pressure upward with the government regulation of rent cap, if you can almost picture it as a rental cap of seven hundred dollars a month or seven thirteen, it becomes problematic in terms of how can you profitably make as many or build as many units as you can while using the government funds and blending those rates with a slightly higher rate, and I'm not going to go into the weeds on this, but it's a slightly higher rent limitation, and then you can go to a third or unlimited market rent. The problem our people are facing, our residents, our fellow citizens, those that we encounter, that I encounter every day that look at me with the imploring look in their eye, they want a nice, I'll make this up, two-bedroom that's clean and safe. Well, they can't find any, and they've found, frankly, substandard, and it's being offered at eighteen hundred or two thousand a month, and it's simply unaffordable for so many. And I'm not saying ultra-rich here. I mean, just people that are working and making a decent living, it's very expensive. So we're desperately trying to incorporate these lower rents, these rent maximums, to make it accessible for as many people as possible while simultaneously leveraging our public money with private money in the form of low-interest loans and still make it workable for that developer, so that no developer's going to come in and say, we want to do this, and we're willing to do it and lose a million dollars a year. Show of hands, who wants to do that? Absolutely nobody. So we've got to make it such that it will work in this public and private partnership, okay? So I'm sorry, I dove into that--
No, you're fine, Commissioner. Having heard some of that, Commissioner Couch, do you have any thoughts or questions at this point?
We set a high bar, a high burden of proof for these two qualified entities, and they exceeded it. I'm listening and absorbing. It's, I'm just absolutely, totally impressed, but here's the two things that weigh with me. Number one is that I know full well that the winners here will be our populace. There's no doubt that what has driven this boat the whole time, these are going to be the guys that are going to benefit from this. And the second thing is, is that, well, and I know that these two entities are believing the same thing, but also that the relationships that can be established on this, I am extremely comfortable, even though I haven't shook any hands out here, other than a handful of them, that they can do this. I'm excited. At the same time, I'm a little bit overwhelmed, but I'm confident that I can make a decision. However we go, it's going to be in the best interest of the people that need to benefit from us, from this, and that's our population. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch. Commissioner House, are you on, still hearing us? Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Looking over the housing projects themselves, I mean, this is, as Commissioner Ross said, it's very detailed and confusing, and there's no real clear road or path to go through. And I think we've got two excellent companies that have applied. I only have a couple of questions, and looking at our housing situation and knowing that we need to move a lot faster than what we have been in the past. I mean, the Bowser Town project, we're like three years into it. We haven't even laid a shovel on the ground yet. So one of the things I'm concerned about is how long is this process going to take? I know it takes a certain time to get the contract done and all that. I realize that. But when you've got projects outstanding that are being constantly delayed, I have an issue with that. I'll state that, you know, with Woda, they have four projects currently going now, and one of those projects is in Rocky Mountain that was awarded in 2020, and with the original completion date of August of this year. They just extended the closing on the property to March 31st of this year, so I'm sure that project's going to be delayed. Also, I'm concerned about where Woda Cooper actually sued Warner Robbins, Georgia, the town, on a project that they had, and they claimed of politics along with switching the site, and some of the sites they switched to had wetlands that they didn't really originally agree to, which could be something very similar to what could happen here.
Commissioner House, I apologize. Your connection wasn't, I got it, there was a lawsuit that Woda Cooper filed against someone, and then it kind of got garbled. I couldn't quite hear you.
Yeah, against Warner Robbins, the town of Warner Robbins, Georgia.
Warner--
Where they have an affordable housing project there.
Warner Robbins, Atlanta.
Warner Robbins, Georgia.
Warner Robbins, Georgia.
And that's an affordable housing project in that city, in which they claim that politics along with switching of the sites, and one of the sites they switched to had a wetland issue, which, like I said, could very possibly, something could run in with one of our sites like that. Now, if Woda wants to be a good partnership with the county like they're stating in their presentations, why would you blindside the partner you're with with a lawsuit? And I'd like to know the answer to that before going forward.
County Manager?
Yeah, I can't answer the lawsuit. I'm not familiar with that. It could be anything.
Yeah, we don't, I agree. I don't know.
But I can tell you the timeframe that both groups gave us, Commissioner House, was sixteen to eighteen months--
Right.
-- from when we turned them loose. So you take out the time it's going to take us to negotiate and do the things we do, which hopefully we can do quickly, and then they need about sixteen to eighteen months before we can start putting people in the project. That was, both groups used essentially the same timeline.
Right. And with the Coastal Group, I know there's several different entities involved in putting that group together, and I've researched quite a few of them and have found that none of those projects or constructions that they've done have been delayed. All of them have been completed on time, and quite a few of them under budget, which is very impressive. So like I said, that's my main concern, is the timeline and getting these things done. And like I said, with certain projects that the groups have had, they said they would be done by this time, and they're being delayed even more. This is something that's very detrimental to Dare County at this present time, and time is of the essence. I mean, I just, I have a problem in awarding to any company that's going to delay the project out even further than what it needs to be, and that's my only concern.
Anything else?
Yeah, I can just call it. I have my original notes from October of 2020, when we began this project, so you can count the many months we've been working on this, so.
Right. Anything else, Commissioner House?
That's all I've got right now, other than the fact that I do want to take a side minute and remember Gail S. Halverson, the Candy Bomber.
Yeah.
He passed away this morning at age one oh one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, he was quite a guy.
Quite a guy. All right. Vice Chairman, you have any thoughts, anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I'd like to thank both Woda Cooper and Coastal for the excellent presentations that were made. We sit here in the envious position that I've only been in just a few times in my life of not being able to make a bad choice, and I think we find ourselves in that position today. I think we were, with the information that we received and the packets that we got, plus the direct contact, which I think was of ultra-importance, and for both groups, I think we got to meet the principles, to have some engagement with them, and I think that was terribly important to helping make the decision that we're looking at making today. I think the questions that have been knocked around, a whole lot of it was handled the other day when we had our meeting, and as long as our other Commissioners who were not there are happy with the position we're in right now, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Well, we come to the point where County Manager, repeat those options we have, if you, so that we make the public perfectly clear and--
Coach, if you all are satisfied that you have enough information and you're comfortable making a decision, you can make a decision today. You can select one of the other, one of the groups, one of the other of the groups today, and that's, you would do that the way you do everything else. Somebody'd make a motion in a second, and if it got approved, it got approved. Somebody'd make a motion in a second, and if it got approved, it got approved, and we'd be done. If you need more information, or you're not comfortable yet, or you need to mull over it and study it some more, then you can, you have, we have this on the agenda for Tuesday. You're not required to act on Tuesday, but you could wait until Tuesday to make a decision. And if you did, then the same thing. You would make a motion and vote and move on. Your other option would be, if you would like to hear directly from the applicants, then you would schedule them to come in at a later meeting to come in, both present, both answer questions of the full board, and then you could make a decision sometime following that. So the timeline is yours, however you are comfortable and whatever level of information that you need to make your decision.
Thanks for going over that, County Manager. Commissioner Ross, you looked like you wanted to say something.
I did, didn't I?
Yeah.
Okay. I do, I do want to say something. I'm glad we've had this chance to share in the presentation packs. It's raised a couple of questions for me, and some of those occurred prior to coming in. For each of the presenters, I would prefer that we've got two really good presenters here, two really good quality companies. And I would like to get just a couple of questions answered. Perhaps we could do that, County Manager, through a feedback question after today's meeting and bring it up on Tuesday. That's kind of where I'm leaning. Because I'd like to know more. Commissioner House introduced two new topics I didn't know. One, an apparent WODA Cooper delay, which he was troubled about. And two, an apparent WODA Cooper lawsuit, which was equally troubling to him. And I'm going to, yes, sir?
The lawsuit, I Googled it while you were all we're talking. Apparently, that lawsuit is WODA Cooper spent a million dollars to develop a project in Warner Robbins. The city then killed the project. There was allegations in the community that was killed for racial reasons, but no one could substantiate that. But WODA Cooper was seeking to either build the project or get their million dollars refunded.
Did you hear that, Steve? Commissioner House?
Yes, I have heard that. And it's still under litigation, from what I understand.
I'm just reading whatever the Google report is, so.
Yeah, but I thought he said they blindsided the partner.
Yeah, that's what I thought, that's what I heard.
I'm not sure it's the same thing. Is that, does that align with what you knew, Steve?
Yeah, the town council was unaware of any problems until all of a sudden they were hit with a lawsuit.
Well, the town council spent a million and canceled the project. Anyway, that was one question I had. The other one was regarding the development delays. Because I also, Bobby, County Manager, heard the sixteen to eighteen months from both entities, which I suspect is true. I suspect they both would do so. And from the Coastal, so those are the two questions. I guess I'd like a further explanation of the lawsuit. I heard what you just said, but I'd like to hear that from them. Because I don't want to take unnecessary risk of lawsuits for us. And the Rocky Mountain development delay, Rocky Mount development delay. And with Coastal, we took, and I didn't get back in the meeting, and I'd like to get response a little bit more, on the downplay of Lytec financing. During that presentation, they said, "We're not going to pursue Lytec." And I understand, Lytec comes with, as I had mentioned early on, some restrictions, specifically around the percentage of area median income that you must use for renting these units. The benefit, of course, is, I think I also described, a tax credit. For instance, I'm hypothetical here. If we had a twenty million dollar project, and there are two types of Lytec proposals. One is non-competitive and readily available. It is called a four percent Lytec. That four percent allows the developer to take four percent of the project cost. In my little example here, that's four percent of twenty million, it's eight hundred thousand dollars, for ten years. That ten-year, eight hundred thousand a year, equals eight million in absolute terms. And it is fungible and saleable. And the current market rates are around, Bobby, I'm looking to you. Do you recall about point eight six, eighty-six percent? So there is also a local kicker that is another X number of hundreds of thousands because we are a difficult-to-develop area. The combination is about a seven million dollar price tag. That seven million is a direct contribution to the cost of developing the units. And I don't know that we would necessarily have to use it. I'm just really reluctant to let go of that federal government benefit, which could be as much as seven million dollars on a twenty million dollar development. So I'd like to hear more about why Lytec funding was taken, sort of put on the side as not favored. And I said one more here. I would also, again, given, as Commissioner Tobin pointed out, one of the consultants in the group, Fred Mills, has done a great deal of this work, okay? And Fred Mills and his company are approved development partners. As our consultants at DFI at the University of North Carolina advised us, to do these, we must have a government-approved partner. We can't just go out and get Ajax Construction down there on Melrose Avenue, for instance. I want to be sure and confirm from Coastal who the individual or the company that is the approved, fully-approved partner for the participation. So those are my two questions.
And related to that, the question you asked me, I didn't know the answer, is if Coastal, say Coastal Affordable Housing, if one of their partners or consultants is allowed or government-approved, does that carry over for the benefit of the whole, or does the whole have to be approved?
Right.
That was sort of, because I'm pretty sure Mills is approved for all that, because that's what they do.
Yeah.
The question is, do they get the benefit of the consultants' approvals if that's necessary?
Right. And I think that would, we should know that, to be fully informed on that decision-making. Because again, I feel like we're not going to go wrong. As I think Danny or Molly, you pointed out, we've got two really good bidders here. And just to clarify some of these, would be, help me cast a vote or selection correctly.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Ross. And I have some of the same concerns, and you brought up the Lytec issue. But I'm looking at the proposals with respects to financing options. And since that was confidential information in Coastal's packet, I'm not at liberty to ask the question I want to ask today. At least I don't think I am. Is that correct, County Manager?
I don't know what you're about to ask. You're not citing.
Well, it's clearly in their packet. It says it's confidential information, so I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to discuss the financing options. And Commissioner Ross has already hinted around Lytec. And I have some concerns about that and some of the suggestions that was made by Coastal. And I have some other questions with respects to possible sites. And in fairness to both, I would like to have those answers before I make a decision.
Just one thing I'll say about Lytec or whatever other rent control that's used for these projects. The mix of whether it's Lytec or whether it's sixty, twenty percent of sixty percent AMI or the sixty to eighty percent AMI, how we balance all that, and if the developer wants to put market in there as well, it'll probably take Dave on one of his algorithms to make all that stuff work and make the dollars come out right and make it work for everybody. But that's something that we need, we will talk about with whoever we get, and we'll come up with the mix that best leverages our money to get as many units as we can. And if that includes a Lytec portion, because by having some Lytec, it opens up the door to allow more units somewhere else, however that balances out, that's what we ought to do. And so until we sit down with somebody and start looking at costs and looking at sites and look at all that, you know, WODA did talk about Lytec and did, Coastal Housing said they'd rather not do it. It was very complicated and all that. But they also said, whatever we say do, they're going to do. And so that math has to be done with someone. It doesn't answer Commissioner Ross's question, but it means.
I don't want to run into a conflict with a partner. In other words, I don't want to say, "Okay, this is what we want, do it." And they say, "Oh, guys, it's kind of not what we recommended." I'd rather iron that out ahead of time.
But it doesn't eliminate Lytec from either of the proposals, as I understood them.
Right, well, in all due respect, I understand what you're saying. I want to hear that from them.
Yeah, okay, sure.
And in fairness to Coastal, I want to hear that from them. As well as some potential sites, I mean, it's obvious they did their homework on potential sites. I was really impressed with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Really impressed. And I've got some questions to ask about those sites. And also, in fairness to WODA, you know, we, what's another, and I understand where Commissioner House is coming from. I've said this from day one. We've been dealing with this way too long. We need to make a decision. We need to move on. We thought we had something in Bowser Town a year ago, and that went to heck in a handbasket. We thought we had something in Bowser Town a month ago, and that went to heck in a handbasket. And I, we need to move on. But in fairness to WODA, with respects to Commissioner House's comments, they need to be here to answer those questions. And, you know, I don't know what another five days is going to hurt. We're going to meet on the twenty-second. So I don't know what another five days will hurt without.
It won't hurt anything. Bob, they are here.
Well, I didn't think we could approach that.
Both parties are here in the room.
Well, I mean, I don't have any, if both parties are here and are prepared to speak, then that, what I didn't want is, I didn't want any unfairness where we're letting one party make their case and the other one wasn't here, so.
You know?
So it'd be fine with me. If they're prepared to answer questions now, then that would be fine with me as well.
Does that, both parties agree?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, then, let's start the parade. I will, who would like to go first? From Commissioner's question. Steve, you want to kick it off, since you brought those questions up?
Yeah, I'll be more than happy to. Like I said, I'm concerned about the delay, the main thing, well, one of the main things. But I know that with WODA, they got four projects currently going on right now in different areas. And one of the ones being closed is to us. Like I said, the project was awarded to them in 2020. And here we are in March of, or February of '22, and they're asking for an extension just to close on the property in '22 of March thirty-first. And like I said, the original completion date was supposed to be August of '22. So how is, are they going to be able to complete that by the completion date? Or is this going to be a further-delayed project for them? And how does this affect the other projects they have going on?
All right, Steve, thank you.
If we add more to it, how can we get a guarantee it's going to be complete?
All right, well, we have WODA before us, and I will yield to those folks.
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon. My name is Denny Blackburn. I'm Senior Vice President with WODA Cooper Companies. I'm based in Savannah, Georgia, and I look after the development activities we have here in the southeast. I'd like to talk about the Rocky Mount case first.
Yes, sir.
And David Cooper, one of the principals of WODA Cooper, is here with me and probably addressed the lawsuit in Warner Robbins. The deal in Rocky Mount is we actually responded to a public-private partnership that was being managed by DFI, Sarah Odeo, with UNC's School of Government. And we responded to that, and we were actually then approved for that deal. And we applied for the tax credits. We received the tax credits. The delay is primarily due to two actual things taking place in parallel. The first one is the funding we were getting was from ENCORE, the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency. And their loan needed to be, get all the right approvals and work with NCHFA. So there's a delay in their intergovernmental loan agreement that they were putting in place, which is one of the aspects. The second delay in the project or the timeframe it's taking to get done is due to the fact that this site was a site that had some environmental issues. And we were going through a full NEPER environmental review, which is just about to be completed, which is why, in agreement with the City of Rocky Mount, we extended the actual start of the actual project. The permits are actually ready for pickup. Both the site civil and building permits are ready to be picked up. And we expect to start construction on that project in next month. That's on the sort of Rocky Mount delay that I think your commissioner was asking the question on.
Did you get that, Steve? Commissioner House? Commissioner House? Did we lose connection?
No, I'm here, Commissioner.
You fell asleep. Did you hear those responses?
Yes, I did. And I understand about the funding and everything. And I know this construction site for Rocky Mount is inside, the city limits well inside. I'm wondering what environmental complications there were.
It was a dry cleaner.
There were buildings on that site at one time.
Sorry, it was a former dry cleaner site.
Pardon?
A former dry cleaner location.
Okay. Did you hear that, Steve?
Yeah, 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 I got it.
Was that five points crossing that we're talking about?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Yeah.
And we're working closely in partnership with the city there. It's a site they selected, and they wanted it cleaned up, taken through the remediation process. So we've been doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Yes. Hi, I'm David Cooper. I want to speak to two issues if I could. One is capacity, which I think someone said we had four projects going on right now. We actually have about thirty projects going on right now. We're a company of roughly seven hundred people. We're geared up to handle multiple projects. At one time, we do, you know, multiple projects across North Carolina and other states simultaneously. We've got the staff to do that and the experience to do that. We do think that what you've asked for here with roughly four hundred and fifty units across several sites would take a large organization to manage and try to pull off quickly. We think we have the staff and the capacity to handle that well. With respect to Warner Robbins, the story is, as always, somewhat complicated. So we were invited to Warner Robbins to help them redevelop the downtown area. We worked closely with their redevelopment authority, got to the point of picking up building permits. The mayor of the city was not in favor of the project, although the city council was. The mayor of the city took some action after we had been through the entire planning process. Again, you know, engaged architects, engineers, ready to get started with construction. He, in essence, instructed the city staff not to issue the building permits. An election took place. There was a change in city council. The city council then revoked sort of permission to move forward. The lawsuit came forward. It was certainly not a surprise to anyone who was involved in the situation. There's been a subsequent election, and the mayor was voted out of office, partially as a result of what happened with this project in the downtown area. Denny and I will be meeting with the new mayor in about a week and a half. And we feel confident at some point we'll have the situation resolved and we'll move forward. But the circumstances there really had nothing to do with us. It had to do with kind of a little bit of political infighting within the city of Warner Robbins. And with the new government in place, we're confident the project will move forward. But I'm happy to answer any other questions about that that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. So the mayor had the authority to not, to request planning not to issue the building permits, correct? He had the authority to do that?
Well.
He might not have had the authority to do it, but it sounds like he did.
He did it. The belief is he did not have the authority to do it. So, I mean, I don't want to... He's been voted out of office. At the time he left office, there were 11 lawsuits against the city, number of which related to similar situations such as this. It's a somewhat complicated situation there. But in November, there was an election, and there is a new mayor now.
So that project, once voted on, the board was fully in support of that, other than the mayor, correct?
By fully in support, I mean, it was a split city council. So it was, I believe, a four to two vote that approved the project. We, again, we actually were invited by the Development Authority in Warner Robins to come, prepare a plan for development in this area. We did that, working closely with them. Everything sailed through, ready to pick up building permits. Denny actually showed up at the office with a check to pick up the building permits. And at that point, they said, the mayor has called and said, don't issue the permits.
So is any of the other rest of the council been replaced?
So since then, there are some new people on council and a new mayor, as I said. And so we feel it's a very favorable situation at this point. And we'll, you know, we'll be meeting with them March 1st to see what we can work out.
Gotcha, okay.
Yes, sir.
Was, I'm gonna say your lawsuit. But was your lawsuit basically just to recover the funds that you had spent to that point? Is that what that lawsuit was about?
So I would say it was about two things in the alternative. One was to either recover the funds we'd spent, which was over $1 million, or to move forward with the project. I mean, we're dedicated housing builders. That's what we do for 32 years. That's what we've done. So our preference is always to work closely with any city and get the housing built. We're long-term owners, managers, holders of property. So, you know, it continues to be our goal. We hope the resolution that comes of this is that we're able to build. We're not really looking for money. That's not really what we do.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
As you know, I sat in on the CIP meeting, and I'm not a member of the CIP, so I couldn't ask any questions.
Okay.
But one of the things that you guys had in that meeting was the price per acre for the lot that you have under contract. It was $800,000 an acre, I believe. And the other one in that graphic that you gave us was $600,000 an acre. Is that, am I correct on those?
Yes.
Okay, and how many total units were you proposing? Do you remember?
So, you know, Denny can probably speak to that.
On this chart, I can't figure it out by this one page.
Yeah, so, I mean, we'd like to build up to 450 units. We do believe that there would be a conversation, of course, with you in terms of what you'd like to have built. As was stated earlier by the county manager, a lot of it's gonna depend on what income levels you want to serve. I know that the money from the state comes with some restrictions in terms of income levels and what they want to see you do. So, of course, we would, you know, our company, we're very accustomed to living within those types of income bands. But, you know, if you think about it, a typical market rate apartment unit, you're gonna have to charge somewhere between $1.70 and $1.90 per square foot in rent in order to completely finance the cost of building that with just conventional debt. So when you add in, you know, the ARP money, when you add in the tax credits, that helps us stretch those dollars across more units. So that'll allow us to build the units, charge rents that are $1 per square foot or slightly less. And we'll use other sources to leverage those funds. You know, one of the things that I can tell you about our company is, in the tax credit world, somewhere around over 50, 55% of the credits every year are purchased by the largest 12 banks in the country. So we have very strong relationships with those banks, really just because we've been at this for a very long time. So we can get typically a premium price for those credits, help stretch that funding even a little bit further. So in terms of the number of units, it would be part of a conversation we would hold with representatives of the county. We would think we'd enter into some kind of development agreement where we said, okay, we agree. Here are the income bands. Here's the funding we're gonna pursue. And as a result, you know, here's how many units we can build. If you say we want to serve higher-income households than that, but we want to keep the rents lower, that means that we probably are not gonna qualify for tax credits. So that'll be fewer units. If you say we want to serve more of a 60% median income household, and we can qualify for the credits, that means we can probably get closer to that 450 units. So it's really gonna be a conversation and a mutual decision.
And when you say qualify for the credits, that's the 4% Lytec?
Yeah, so it's either 4% or 9%. The two programs. And to the extent we can qualify for the 9%, you know, we'll do that because it's a much bigger resource. I think it's fair to say over the last probably three, four years, we're the most successful 9% developer in North Carolina. And we've also done a number of the 4% deals. So, you know, we have good experience with both of those. And I think, you know, can bring those resources to bear.
When we were talking with Sarah, the timing on the Lytec funds was paramount, it seemed like to me. Do you see that as being any possibility of a substantial delay, having to wait on a federal program to make those decisions?
So, of course, that's, you know, that's gonna be part of the timing. Not all of these units are gonna be financed with tax credits. So it's gonna be a combination of things. You know, by the time we're ready to get started with the application process, I think it might delay by three or four months behind units that don't have those credits. But it's not gonna be a material delay, and it would be worth the wait to add that resource. We've talked to the State Housing Agency, where we have a good relationship with them, and they're aware that we're potentially gonna be involved in this project. They're excited for it. They think it's needed housing here and have indicated that they'd want to work with us, trying to make something work here. So, you know, if we, you know, that would help a lot to shortcut the process.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. It's nice that I was able to ask you questions this time.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the ability to answer them.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things, Mr. Cooper, if you clarify in the presentation, you know, that 800,000 really hit me between the eyes when we met. Obviously, I hope, obviously, that was total land and construction costs. Is that correct?
No, that is the actual land costs in a site we're looking at in Nag's Head.
No, you do not own that site.
You don't own that site.
We don't own that site. We have it under contract. Yeah, but that was just example. If I can address to you, Commissioner Torb, and I think it was... I'm pleased that chart is confusing you because the idea is it depends. There are two major things that are gonna change the impact number of units. One, Chairman, is what your, is the actual land cost. I mean, if you can find land cost at a lower price, you'll be able to build more units. We thought it was important when we came in not to come in with a price too low. And then you were saying, well, you know, that's not reality. Because reality is that that's the price that we're finding today on these particular sites. And the second one is the actual density. In other words, how many units can you put per acre? And of course, you are dealing with six, seven different communities, which all have their own zoning rules and regulations. So we just use that a little bit to show if you do a 10 units per acre density or if you do a 20 units break. And that's where you've got those different sort of figures. So when you say, you know, how many units you think? We think we could get, you know, very close to 450 if you use the Lytec. It's a leveraged the funding source.
Okay, thank you. I'm just, I'm struggling with that 800,000 figure. If somebody told me 800,000 on the oceanfront, that would be per foot, I'd buy that. I'd buy that in the heartbeat. There's other potential properties out here. I gotta be careful what I'm saying here, Mr. County Attorney. One of those potential properties was from the other company's proposal. It didn't even come close to that number. So I'm wondering if with them hearing that, they may be upping their price.
Well, when I recall, excuse me, Mr. Cooper.
But, you know, I'm just, I don't know how to put my arms around this.
I think that...
That is commercial property, I believe, that you have under contract.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so it's commercial property.
Yeah, it's commercial property on bypass.
Yeah, all right, well...
And look, it's every bit in our interest to find the best land price that we can. It's every bit in your interest for us to do that. We, as we responded here, we were responding with our qualifications.
Gotcha.
And, you know, we would, if we are selected, we will, of course, work with you to find the best sites, the most cost-effective sites. I will tell you, our company, every property we've developed, we continue to own. And so, you know, it's important to us that whatever locations we find are good, quality locations and have a lot of amenities that serve the residents and that really are built for the long term. So we would work carefully with you. Again, I think we're looking at probably six or eight different sites in different communities. So we'd want to make sure that we located those in the best way possible.
Well, and I appreciate that. And I'm confident you will. It's just, I don't know how, and I hate this word, and I'm not gonna use it. So I'll use workforce, and I'll use essential. With that kind of cost, I don't know how it can be able for folks to afford. I struggle with that big time. But I understand where you're coming from. That's a commercial site, and some other things can take place. But anyhow, thank you for that explanation. Steve, anything else?
No, I just got one other question. I know with the 35 million from the state, if I'm not mistaken, that cannot be used as a partnership with Lytec. Am I correct?
Uh, no. The American Recovery Funds can be used with Lytec.
No, that's different. That's not American Recovery Funds. Bobby, we...
Bobby, you'll get it. Steve, the answer is it could be used. The statute that gives us the money says that the majority of what we develop has to be not to exceed 70 to 80% of AMI. And so when you're doing your mix, you could have Lytec in that mix as long as you had the majority of the units within the statutory requirements. And so when I was telling you before, we needed Dave's algorithm to figure it out. When you start doing that, you've got to also meet the 20% at 60%. You also got to keep the majority at 70 to 80%. And then the developer may want some market rate in there, too. So when you put all that together, you've got to make all of these requirements work. That's what Commissioner Ross was talking about. We've got these layered rules that weren't made in concert with each other. And so whoever becomes the private partner, we've got to sit down and figure out what kind of mix we can get to, one, get the demographic we want. And then with that demographic, meet those various layers of statutory requirements. And whether that would then include Lytec or not, I don't know. It depends on what the balance of the other types of units we do and how do we meet those requirements. So until somebody sits down and does that based on the cost of the land and the number of units we're gonna build and all those things, we really won't know the answer to that.
And the maximum income that can be served under the tax credit program is 80%. So a number of the units would fit within that program.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cooper. Don't go anywhere.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that the rest of my fellow commissioners don't have any additional questions. Are you, Mr. Cooper? Anyone else? All right, thank you.
No, thank you for your time.
Yeah, just hang tight. You never know, we might have some more questions.
Okay.
All right. Questions of Coastal?
Hi, guys.
Mr. Chair.
Well, I ask my two. Do I want me to repeat those, Bobby, or you have those?
Yeah, the first one was why was Lytec pulled off the table? That was your first question.
So let me address that one, sort of big picture, and then Aaron.
Yeah, introduce yourselves.
Who are you?
I'm sorry, I'm Robbie Ferris, and this is Aaron Thomas, and we're with Coastal.
Great, thank you.
So we modeled this multiple ways. As you know, Piper Sandler is on our team, and they've done, I think, most, if not all, of the financings for this county for a very long time. And then the Mills Group is also on our team. And we had both of them running models multiple ways. So we started with the 9% Lytec, which is kind of what would normally come to people's mind. And with that model, we got in that 450 range. But we recognize that that's a competitive process, and there are not generally large 9% deals done, not only in this state, but in many states.
Commissioner Couch, are you familiar with 9% deals?
I'm wondering if it's gonna be an apples-to-apples comparison out here. I could be missing something.
Well, a 9% deal is reminiscent of a unicorn, if you can find one. You simply can't find one. I'm looking at Mr. Ferris and Mr. Thomas.
That's right.
If I'm wrong, guys, point it out. The number of characteristics of a site that have to be on the list and checked off are so extensive that it makes them the rarest of items.
You're correct. DFI, Commissioner Couch, found three sites in all of Dare County that would possibly... Nobody can tell you if they're gonna be eligible because you have to score them and apply for it, and you may or may not get it, and you may or may not score high enough versus someone else who's doing it. But there are three sites that were in all of Dare County. One of them was tied up with someone else. One of them was the Saga site here in Mania. So that leaves two sites. One was the Elizabethan site that we looked at, and we discarded for various reasons that we talked about, which leaves one site. And that one site is still available. It's, people know about it. It's not a top-secret site, but, and we don't know whether that's gonna be, would really be eligible or not. So getting 9% money seems like a far-fetched plan in Dare County just because of the way we lay out and the way we would score in one of those. And so no one that we've talked to has held out great hopes for 9% money. Now, the 4% money doesn't have to score like that. And likely, we could get 4% money if we wanted to do that. And if, when we did that mix that Commissioner Ross was taking, talking about, that somehow allowed us to leverage more units on a site or more things to make those averages work, then, you know, it would be another pot of money that the developer could go to, and it'd be a discussion we'd have to have with whoever our developer is. I think I said that right. You guys, correct me if I'm wrong.
That kind of concurs with what we've really known all along regarding 9%. Yes, sir. And Commissioner, to answer your question a little more broadly and then get down in the weeds just a little bit. So our initial proposal, we proposed that we would, when we... And I think Fred really spoke to this pretty in detail, but it was a lot of information. So basically, we said, we have looked at all of the different funding sources. Some of the ones, every one we talked about today, plus other ones that we didn't talk about today, plus, as the chairman pointed out, additional financing sources that we suggested that, in our model, provided great leverage. While also, what we looked at was speed. We understood from reading your RFQ. We understood from listening to a lot of your meetings over, that are on YouTube, that you guys have been working on this, I think, as was stated, a while. And that it was very important to you to move quickly, to solve this problem quickly. We also understand and know, you know, you go to the grocery store, you understand that everything cost a lot more than it did six months ago. So we're in an inflationary environment. And so we stated that we could look at 9%, 4%, conventional financing, also some of the other government programs that we looked at. But we know that on 9%, it's a competitive process, as has been laid out. We know that it's scored on...
I honestly have dropped 9%. I'm not even considering it. I'm just looking at a 4% non-competitive.
Right, okay, so on the 4%, we say non-competitive. Historically, it has been non-competitive. However, some of the money that has been put into the program has come from some of these federal funding streams. And right now, the guidance has not been issued, fully issued from Treasury, that fully tells how that money can be... fully tells how that money can be incorporated. And so, we stated that if we, we would look at doing a 4%. If we do a 4%, Fred would be, uh, a part of that deal because of his experience as doing a 4%. But we presented that-
He, he would be a principal in deals, what you're saying?
On, if, on, on housing finance, if we do housing finance.
House?
If we do a 4% deal.
4% or 9% is housing finance.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
But we presented, the two models that we presented being one, conventional financing, and one, the alternative source. And then we showed what our coverage ratios were those, and we said, hey, with these, we can move more quickly. With these, we don't have to worry about guidance coming from the federal government down to the state, uh, that you have no idea when it's going to come. Because, you know, when federal bills are passed, Careback being one of those, they pass a bill, then they come back after they pass a bill and they write guidance for that, for that particular legislation. And there's guidance that is yet to be written that could affect that. So, not to say that we couldn't do a 4% deal, we would absolutely model every option on the table, and we would present it to you guys, because as we stated over and over and over, there's nobody in this room that's done more work with county governments in North Carolina than I have, than Robbie and I have, and also with the state of North Carolina than Robbie and I have. We understand you guys are the boss. We're going to put every option on the table for you to select, and one of those would would be 4%.
Gotcha. I think what you just explained helps a lot.
Yeah, it does.
You've, you've explained that if we approach a Lytec deal, Mr. Mills would join the group as a principal and therefore be an approved, I'm looking at county manager, entity for that program, which we know requires, uh, uh, advanced approval.
Correct. And that, that is the question, does, does him, you have your entity, your LLC, that isn't an approved, it's a legal entity, but it's not a, it's never done anything as an entity. And so, does the approval of Mills as a principal carry over as the approval for the entity? That was the question.
Yes, and the, and the reality is, uh, commissioners and managers, that the project would be, whatever project is, is, is moved forward, would require single-purpose entities to be set up for the project. And so, for the tax credit project, Mills would be a principal and that single-purpose entity that makes the application for the 4%, if that answers your question.
I, I think it does. Does that answer my question?
What is a single-
I'm looking at my legal counsel.
What is a single per, single purpose entity?
It's set up for one job, Wally. That's it.
Gentlemen, if I may. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Marion Warren, uh, counsel here. So, the rule, as they're arcane, and our, our, uh, guests here, that we're guests, was also is talked about, talking to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. You set up an entity to do this project. Coastal Affordable Housing is your partner. They partner with the Mills Organization. The Mills Organization has at least 15% as a principal of the new single-purpose entity to develop the 4% housing, and that will satisfy the rules under the North Carolina Finance Housing Agency.
So, yeah, excuse me, sir.
Gotcha, thank you, Judge.
So, are you, are you saying that there, there could be, since we're probably looking at multiple projects here, there's not going to be one grandiose project, obviously?
Well, and, and that, I was listening, I apologize.
Let me, let me finish asking some questions.
Yes, sir, I apologize.
That's all right, no problem. Uh, so, if, let's say we've got six projects. So, one of them could be Lytec, in which case Mr. Mills would be a principal. Another project might not be Lytec, might be one of your other sources. Um, I almost said it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but one of your other sources, and, and he wouldn't necessarily be involved as a principal in that project, he would just be involved as a, an advisor.
Uh, the Mills Organization as a whole, and Freddie himself, that y'all all met during our presentation, will not be merely an advisor. He will be a consultant, and he will be contractually obligated to Coastal Affordable Housing in any capacity in which we enter into a discreet individual series of projects with the county. What we would, what I visualize, to answer your question, Mr. Vice Chair, directly is, uh, you yourselves have talked about this being a project all over Dare County. We again understand that Dare County is one mile wide and 100 miles long, and in this particular instance, we're going to have to set up in negotiation with the county, recognizing that you're the, uh, in the driver's seat. We will end up creating these entities. These entities will suit the purpose that you're wanting for that particular piece of property, for that community in this county. And in each one of those, if there is a 4% or 9, the, the unicorn, as Mr. Commissioner has said, if it's a 9% project, Mr. Mills will be a principal, and his organization will have more than 15%. He will be contractually obligated, he is contractually obligated with us in any other capacity for any other project, not merely an advisor. He will be here for our management, and this North Carolina-centric team will be here with the county throughout the course and the life of this project.
Yeah, I apologize, I, I misused the word advisor.
No, there was no misuse, sir.
No, 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 I did, I, I stated it. I didn't state it right, I, I didn't. But, but what I'm trying to understand is, so whether it's a 4% or a 9%, he would be involved as a principal?
Absolutely.
Okay. But there could be projects, but there could be projects that are financed through other means, that he would not be, what was the right word?
He would not be a principal.
A principal, okay.
But he would be contractually obligated to Coastal Affordable-
As a council.
Yeah. Okay. And Mr. Chairman, may I step aside?
No, please don't.
Yeah.
I have a question. Getting wrapped around the axle here. You said that as we go forward with these entities, that there'll be multiple other entities created.
If you wish, if that's the, excuse me.
Well, so, let me, let me just finish my thought, so you can steer me straight here. The, the, we're going to, if we award this, we're going to have Coastal Affordable Housing as our private partner. And so, any funds that we expend will have to go from us to Coastal Affordable Housing. And from our perspective, Coastal Affordable Housing is our partner in whatever indemnities have, we talked about it, whatever indemnities, things that we have in whatever our agreement is, we're going to be looking for something other than Coastal Affordable Housing to provide those indemnities, simply because it doesn't have assets or anything for us to fall back on for those indemnities. And so, if you're going to create other entities that are sub-agents, if you will, of Coastal Affordable Housing, then, then fine, our relationship's not with those entities, our relationship is with Coastal Affordable Housing. Am I saying that correctly?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And they would only be created through a partnership and at the direction of the board to fulfill the specific need for that individual's pocket of land.
Okay.
You know, you could be an umbrella organization, you can be a large corporation. However, you're ultimately going to have to do these as discrete packages, no matter what you want.
In theory, if we didn't do any Lytec housing that required you to bring in another principal, then we could do a master agreement, and then each project would have its own addendum or sub, whatever, to the master agreement to add projects as we move down the line.
Even with a Lytec, um, project, I would actually anticipate a master agreement. And that master agreement would go through with a series of additional, excuse me, uh, primary requirements. It would also include us showing you and partnering with you, this is the land, are we going to ask you to exercise any of your authority as a county to assist us? And the master agreement would then set forth our timelines, our obligations, the indemnifications, uh, who all the principals are.
Everything that applies to any project goes in that. Anything that's specific to a particular tract goes in the sub-agreement, if you will.
Exactly. And then if we, and we, I think we're talking about getting wrapped around the axle, calling this thing a specific entity, that's, or a special-purpose entity, that's more along the lines of a term of art for a developer. What this would be is, we get this done. We get this done. And then you're ready to move on to all of those other projects that you've talked about in your master plan since May of 2015, because that's actually how long you've been dealing with this. You created your first master plan with the assistance of the United, the, the UNC School of Government back in May of 2015. And you have had a tremendous number of great ideas, and none of them have come to fruition. We're going to be that partner with you to bring those ideas from paper, from thought to paper, to dirt, being fixed, and apartments, and buildings, and homes growing from that dirt. And we will, through that master plan and the agreement with the county, that's how we'll do it. Thank you, Judge. Commissioner Ross, I thought he had two questions, but he stepped out just a moment. Do you, do you know what that second question was, Bobby?
He answered it. He was, he asked about the Lytec and why it was pulled off, and he asked about, uh, the government approvals. If, if we did Lytec, how are they going to accomplish that? And they explained that they would do that through the Tap Mills Group.
Okay. Commissioner Couch, you got any questions?
Just, I hope this doesn't sound naive, and forgive me if it does, but let's use Bowser Town as an example, and maybe one other piece of property that may or may not be under the county umbrella. Is that going to keep the price where we need it to be to make this to be successful if we have to, uh, give something to make an affordable, uh, something that's going to appeal to workers?
Will we?
I'm, 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 who wants to go, who wants to go? Who wants to answer that?
Let me just say one thing that we discussed at the CIT meeting, that, was it, we can talk now about land costs, we can talk now about construction costs, and you've been involved in enough of our construction projects to know that until you go out to sign the contract to get your contractor on board, you don't know what the construction costs are. You, you estimate them, you think you do, you use your best data, but we've been surprised with most of the contracts that we've done recently, they've all come in more than what we thought when we first started talking about. So, I, I asked, when we were talking at CIT, I said, let's, they could, any of these groups can tell us what they think the construction costs could be, but they aren't the construction costs. They are what they are when we get there. They're giving you the, they're not lying, they're giving you the best information they have available, but when the time comes, they're not bidding. But if we were bidding, that's when we know what the price is. The same thing with the land costs. I mean, that particular piece of property that the chairman was talking about, those folks put it on the market for that, and somebody was willing to enter a contract with that. There may be other pieces of property out there that are suitable for this, that would come in at lower prices, or maybe some at higher prices. And whatever land we can get and where we can get it that can do what we want, that cost is going to be the determining, one of the determining factors in how many units we get on that site. So, again, I'm not telling you not to ask about price and all that, that's good, they could tell you what they're thinking, but remember that when we, whatever they say, when we get ready to do it, it's likely to be different. That's what we have found with all the projects that we've done so far.
Well, trust me, I'm, we're quite aware of that.
And I knew you were, but, but they weren't at the meeting when we talked about that.
Right, right.
Well, I want to make sure that the restaurant worker's getting a place to live and not going to take an attorney from DC to afford one of these units.
Right.
I think it's important to note that the land, we, we identified a number of pieces of the land, as the chairman has mentioned. Uh, some of them, we had just had conversations with owners about, actually, one of them that we have under contract-
Right.
Uh, and with the Schiffmans that are here today. And, um, that, that land cost was much lower than the number I heard thrown out earlier.
112.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and thank you for addressing that, because that was one of my questions I was asking. You had, y'all did your research on possible sites, and you listed a, a number of them. And, and that was my, my question, and I believe you've answered it, is, was, have you had conversations with those property owners? I know you have one under contract, but I was curious if you had had conversations with those other property owners that you identified.
We, we have, and, um, some of them look really positive and others, you know, maybe a little bit more questionable.
In, in particular, um, I believe, wasn't the Promenade one of those, uh, properties at the foot of the bridge that you had in your presentation?
That is one of the ones we had looked at.
Have you had conversations with that individual?
I think we have, and, uh, that, that, in the last few days.
Yeah.
We know, we, we definitely are not at a point where we have a deal made on that property, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I, listen, y'all be patient with us. We're asking a lot of questions, but we, we are doing this to, uh, make sure that we cover all bases, and I hope you understand where we're coming from, from that, that point of view.
Yes, sir.
I, I do have some other questions, but in fairness to my fellow commissioners, I yield to them first. Commissioner Couch, have you finished?
I'm still listening.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Tobin, you have any questions at Coastal?
No, mine were answered when we were talking about the Lytec stuff.
And I think Commissioner Ross, yours has been answered.
Yeah, I, mine were.
He says, but he, he's always got one more.
I think that's why the chairman likes me best.
That's right.
Hey.
Commissioner House actually triggered this-
Right.
-with his questioning. I hadn't even thought of this. Have you guys ever been the target of a lawsuit, or have you ever filed a lawsuit in your professional careers in doing all the developments you've done?
Everybody in the construction has been subject to a lawsuit, sorry.
That's what they say. If you and the contractor still talk, it's, it's almost impossible not to. But I wanted to confirm, okay, that's a lawsuit.
That's so true.
Vice Chairman.
I'm good. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to give myself the advantage if, as Commissioner Ross, if a question is spurred in.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Woda was kind enough to give us a ballpark on, uh, what the cost per square foot was for rent. Do y'all have a ballpark in that area?
I would say that the ball, it's in the same range.
He said a dollar seventy to a dollar eighty.
I think he said-
Dollar ninety, yeah.
That was the market, and I think it's a matter of how it gets financed and what the market study says and what your goals are and the mix that you'd like to see. I think we can, we can manage the rents where they need to be, but to, to go to one of Mr. Ross's questions earlier, uh, the tax credits are a significant subsidy, but interest rates, a lower interest rate can be an equal subsidy on an annual basis. And so, that provides us an ability to meet the rental requirements that you all put out there and that the, that we're going to ultimately have to meet for the, for the loans.
The low-interest loans, absolutely, and that USDA 538 would be, obviously, again, an excellent financing tool that I know Piper could handle. It's just that the Lytec tax credit, you don't have to pay it back. You sell it and you put it in your pocket, and you pay the construction with it. That's, that's my attraction to that particular avenue. Okay, thanks, guys.
Um, I think I'm good with everything I've seen today and heard and so forth, and I'll, I'll yield to my fellow commissioners if there's any additional one last several, three or four, or whatever questions they may have. And I'll yield to them if there's any other questions.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, with the principles for Coastal Affordable Housing, um, how many public-private partnerships have, have y'all done collectively?
In excess of 20, uh, recently.
Yes, it's in here.
Yep. In excess of 20, uh, public-private partnerships in North Carolina. Uh, we've done three of them with forgivable loans, and lots of them were housing, many of them were housing. Aaron and I together have done about 6,000 beds in North Carolina.
And one with a dredge.
There you go.
Commissioner, Commissioner House, I, I'm not sure if you saw that on page seven of their presentation, but they list those 20 public private-
Yeah, yeah.
-projects in the Carolinas, three forgivable loans in the Carolinas, and one forgivable loan in Dare County. I'm not sure if you saw that in their presentation.
Yeah, I want, yeah, I want, I wanted to see it, I just wanted to make sure it got on record.
What, what about, to Commissioner House, just so you know-
This is a record.
Just so you know, before we invited either of these groups to present, we went through the statute and the requirements that the statute had to be sure they were each eligible to even have a conversation. And any, if we had gotten anybody that wasn't eligible, that didn't meet those criteria, we would not have asked them to come and be. So, you, you're, whatever the criteria are, like, doing, have done on affordable housing, has done a public-private partnership in North Carolina, those things, both of these groups met that criteria, uh, and we made sure of that before we invited them here. So, you're good there.
Mr. House, you said something about 6,000 beds, and I missed, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that before that gets going, but what, what were you saying there, please?
Aaron and I have done approximately 6,000 beds collectively.
Got you. Thank you.
In North Carolina.
Got you.
Would each of those be like a single-purpose entity and LLC that was created on each project, guys?
Not, not each bed, but each project.
No, no, not each bed. Each of the projects would be a separate LLC that you guys have, because I know you've done and built a lot of them. You explained that.
They were, almost in each instance, they're always a, a unique.
Got it. That's helpful. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
In fairness to Commissioner House, he said he had several questions. You had the first one answered. Do you have another?
Yeah, one other. You're talking about doing several projects across, across the county. And how, how are those going to be addressed? I mean, is it like three different projects, or is it going to be one project as a whole on different sites? Exactly, how do you maintain on doing those?
I think that we'll, we'll make that decision collectively with you. We'll look at the land that's available, and look at the, at the cost, availability of sewer, you know, water pressure, all of the issues that we've got to balance in, in the process, and whatever seems to make the most sense. We, we do have a handful of sites to consider very quickly, and I think we can make that decision with you very quickly.
And just to follow up on that as well, Robbie, I wanted to point out, and just to make sure, Commissioner Couch, I asked your earlier question, answered your earlier question fully. We understand that we can't spend, you know, some of the numbers have been thrown out here today, per acre on land. And Commissioner Woodard, we, we spent so much time looking at different sites, because we understand how important that's going to be to this transaction. And I think one thing that also buoy's our team is the fact that we've got, that we're all North Carolina folks, and we've got a lot of folks that understand the unique attributes of the property here that are in this room with us, that are a part of our team, whether they be real estate professionals or design professionals, and folks that really understand the land here. And I think that's one of the reasons why we were able to very quickly come up with a lot of options. We're not saying that those are the options, but we're saying that we understand that we've got to get a piece of property that works for all of the various infrastructure reasons, zoning reasons, but we also got to get something that is reasonable per acre, because we understand that the goal is to get as much housing as we can. And if we spend all our money on land, it's going to reduce the number of, of units that we can put on it.
Right. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions, Coastal, from the board?
No, I'm good.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner House. Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners.
We are at the point, well, where I will ask the board if they, at the, are at the point to make a decision today.
I, I am hoping we make a decision on Tuesday, because I want to sleep on a couple of things I heard today, and I had one other follow-up question for the county manager, not for the principals. So, Tuesday would be my preferred date for us to take a vote on, on the selection at our regular board meeting.
Commissioner Couch?
Bobby, we're, I'm, I'm not going to be here. I'm going to be listening to the meeting. Were we able to resolve whether or not a vote counts, if you're teleconferencing?
I believe under the current, well, I don't know, because the governor just changed things. I don't know what he did with his state of emergency, but under those rules, we could vote via Zoom, if you want to do that.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, all right. As long as my vote counts.
If, if not, then we would, what we would do is we would vote, and then you could come back at the next make, meeting and quote, make it legal, so that we would know where to go, but, just to be sure we covered all the bases.
All right.
And which, if you were going to do it by Zoom, I would suggest we do that anyway, just to be sure there's no question.
Absolutely.
All right.
Commissioner House?
One, one-
Yes, sir.
Sorry, one last thing on that. If it wins by a majority of the board without your vote, then it doesn't matter, whether-
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Couch. Commissioner House, are you at a point to move forward, or do you, would you prefer to hold off until our formal board meeting on the 22nd?
I, I think in light of some of the, the information we've gotten today, I'd like to do a little bit more research, and come back and address it on, on Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner House. Vice Chairman?
Tuesday's fine with me.
Pardon?
Tuesday's fine with me.
Tuesday's fine? Okay. Commissioner Bateman is not here, so in fairness to him, I would want, hopefully, his presence. So, it-
You know, I hadn't thought of that, but that, that's a good point. I mean, I missed Urban, you're right. He's normally in the chair there.
So, then, is there the consensus of the board that we will make this final decision on Tuesday?
Yep.
At our February 22nd board meeting. Okay. Then, that being said, please put that on the agenda, County Manager.
It's already on the agenda. The package called out.
Oh, all right. Well, you're one step ahead, then. You, you must have ESP or something.
Yeah, I didn't read the agenda. I saw the-
ESP in.
It's easy to take it off, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you're right. Well, let me just say, gentlemen, I hope this has been beneficial to both Coastal and Woda Cooper. I hope you fully understand how delicate this is for us, and how important it is for us to move forward, to try to certainly get some workforce or essential housing in Dare County. We have, and you've stated it, our commissioners have stated it, we have messed around with this way too long. I've had numerous conversations with our mayors, trying to encourage them to do the same thing in their municipalities. This is critical for Dare County moving forward. And once again, I can't say enough about the professionalism on both your parts and, and your presentations, and, and what you've presented to us. I, I don't, as, as the vice chairman has said, I don't think we can go wrong, no matter what direction we go and who we choose. But we will make this decision. I'm sorry you got to wait a couple more days, because I know you, all of y'all have been very patient with us, and I know you'd like an answer. And, but I also hope that you understand our procedure and how we've gone about this, and we want to, want to dot every i and cross every t that we possibly can. So, be a little bit more patient with us. We will make that decision come Tuesday, the 22nd. With that being said, is there any further business that become before us today?
Need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir, I do.
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor to adjourn. It's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further comments? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion, stick a five or a nine. Our motion carries you now.